This uh meeting to order. Alright, seven o'clock. The Dumfries Town Council Regular Meeting, seven PM of Tuesday, May seventh, two thousand nineteen is hereby called to order. Uh clerk, could you please take the roll call?
Councilman Brewer. Councilman Fields. Councilwoman Miles.
Here.
Councilwoman Neville.
Present.
Councilwoman Willis.
Here.
Vice Mayor Nickerson.
Here.
Mayor Wood.
Present. Next we'll have our invocation by Pastor James of the New Life Christian Center.
Good evening. Let's pray. Dear Lord, we thank you this evening. We thank you for another day. We thank you for the opportunity to come tonight, to gather tonight, to take care of this city's business. We ask and pray that you would look down upon every person here tonight. We ask that you would look down upon this community. Lord, we pray for special blessings. We pray for special favor. We pray that you would look down every street, every block, every avenue, over every home, over every family. We pray that peace will prevail in our environment. We ask and pray specifically tonight that you would look down upon all of our city officials, that you would look down upon the law enforcement officers. We ask and pray that you would look down upon the mayor of this city, God, and all the government officials tonight, and we ask and pray that you would give them wisdom. We ask and pray that you would give them discerning. We ask and pray tonight specifically for the agenda of this meeting, and God, that you would give special direction and that you would allow your perfect will to be accomplished on tonight. We thank you and we honor you in your name. Amen.
Amen. Uh would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the Father.
Thank you for having your outside voice member. Next is the adoption of the agenda. Uh town manager, any amendments to the agenda?
No, sir.
Uh council, uh any adoptions, I mean, any adoptions, any uh additions to the agenda?
No.
Okay. Seeing done, and then I welcome a motion to adopt the agenda.
Second.
Alright, it's been moved, it's been second. Uh seeing no further discussion, please call for the question. Motion carries six zero. Alright. Alright, first on our agenda tonight is a public hearing, and our first public hearing is an ordinance on a zoning text amendment to chapter seventy, uh division fourteen in the planned mixed-use district. Uh and we're gonna have our staff presentation from our um planner, Tatiana Fosseri, please make your way up.
Good evening, everyone. I'm here to request that the town council move the ordinance to reduce the minimum lot requirements in the pea-mud zone from five acres to two acres. This is to encourage development and would allow many parcels to immediately uh an opportunity for growth. It is in line with the comprehensive plan and future goals of the town. There any questions?
Okay. Seeing done, I just want to uh, I'll just give a little bit more background for the, for the public hearing portion of it. Um because I think this, this makes smart decision for us as far as being pro-growth and uh to be prepared for development. So this is, I think, a good administrator for a little bit more background on this. The town manager, town manager and the committee development director, I had the town man, planner to go out to find methods to encourage, to encourage real estate development within our town. And the question arose about how appropriate, uh what was the appropriate size of our pea-mud district and what the requirements. And after reviewing all the lots on our Main Street corridor, which is right here on our Main Street part of Dumfries where development is desired, the average size lots are all smaller than an acre, and therefore a minimum lot size of five acres uh for a pea-mud is very, uh it doesn't promote growth. It doesn't promote any development. So uh I think this is a, a, a great move as far as on the staff presentation. So uh we're now gonna open this up for a public hearing. To see if there's any citizens. Are there any citizens signed up, uh town clerk, to speak against the uh or for the five acres being reduced to two acres?
No one has signed up.
Alright, was there anyone here from the public that wanted to speak on that issue? Alright, well seeing none, we're gonna close the public hearing. Alright, council discussion. Council Lady Miles.
Uh I'd like to make a motion to approve the zoning text amendment, changing um the minimum pea-mud lot size from five acres to two.
Second.
Spin motion and second discussion. Council Lady Willis.
On the comprehensive plan citations on page two of two, the plans recommends that aesthetic retail services near residential areas is important, as an important amenity to residents. Do we know what, what we are talking about when they say aesthetics?
Town Planner.
Cause that's a, that's kind of a.
Um I was referring to the, the comprehensive plan in general. I apologize for those.
That's fine.
That are on the page.
Do we know what it means, though, when they say aesthetic retail services? Or is that just a word that was just put in the plan? You, I don't have any idea.
If I, if I may, uh Councilwoman Willis, I believe that the language that is derived from the plan was desti- intended to be a word that's used to be pleasing, and they would have certain elements that would uh contribute to the enhancements or the beauty of that corridor. And so it's almost like a word to prompt you to design elements that would be aesthetically pleasing, well, not to define a word with the word, but to make sure that it looks uh pleasing and uh conforms to certain requirements that they go on the detail.
Do we have those written in the plan, though?
Yes, and keep in mind that with the upcoming budget, we plan to take a look at our comprehensive plan and our zoning. So we will have the opportunity to discuss those type of definitions and, and make adjustments where we see fit.
Thank you all, thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? Alright, so we have a motion on the floor to, uh for the council to approve and adopt the ordinance changes to section seventy dash five thirty-five dash one and seventy-five thirty-five dash two. Uh call for the question. Alright, motion carries seven zero. Uh town clerk, did you note Councilman Brewer has entered?
He has noted.
Thank you. Alright, next on the agenda is a resolution authorizing, a public hearing for a resolution authorizing the town manager into a lease agreement for office space at one seven seven three nine Main Street. Uh Mr. Rogers for the presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh this item uh would allow us to enter into a lease agreement with uh Lincoln Financial for space within this building. And so this is now the public hearing, and so I will be looking for a motion for council to approve.
Alright, any, uh so that's the staff presentation. Was there any questions on the staff presentation? Alright, we're gonna open this up to a public hearing. Is there any body from the public here to speak about this lease agreement?
No one signed up.
Alright, is anyone here from the public wishing to speak about this lease agreement? Alright, well seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Alright, council discussion. Alright, seeing no council discussion, is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
Some move.
Alright, it's been moved.
Second.
Second by the vice mayor. Alright, call for the question. Alright, motion passes seven zero. Alright, next on the public hearing agenda is an ordinance to adopt and appropriate funds for the FY twenty budget. Uh town manager for the presentation.
Thank you, Mayor, and I would ask uh if we could consider the next three items as a block as they all pertain to the uh FY twenty budget and capital improvement plan. The first ordinance is our general fund budget, uh which contains all of our appropriations within the general fund. Uh item D is our fee schedule, and as advertised, we have made no changes to the tax rate or the fee schedule, which is also included in the budget document and has been duly advertised with the budget. And finally, item E is to adopt our capital improvement plan. Uh this uh ordinance, as well as the capital improvement plan, has been advertised and included with the public budget document as well. Uh so I'm recommending that we entertain a public hearing on these three items uh all at once, and that we move to uh introduce the ordinances for the fee schedule and the general fund budget, and to adopt the resolution approving the capital improvement plan.
Alright, so you want to group C, D, and E all together as one public hearing?
That's correct.
Okay. Alright, that is our, our staff presentation. We're gonna open it up for public comment and feedback on the uh, and we're looking for feedback from the public on uh the fee schedule, the FY twenty budget, and the capital improvement plan. Uh Dawn, has anyone signed up for any of those?
No one has signed up at this time.
Alright, was there anyone here from the public wanted to speak on uh the budget? Alright, seeing none, we're gonna close the public hearing. Alright, we're gonna open it up for council discussion. Alright, council, any discussion on the budget, the fee schedule, or the capital improvement plan? Alright, seeing none, I welcome a uh, a motion.
Some move.
Second.
Alright, so motion is to adopt FY twenty budget into ordinance to the May twenty-first meeting for adoption, as well as the fee schedule and the twenty dash twenty-four capital improvement plan. Call for the question. Alright, motion passes five two. Alright, next on the agenda is our citizen comment period. Alright, citizens may address the council for up to five minutes. Uh a chair or representative of the board of commission committee may speak up to eight minutes. Alright, town clerk, is there any citizens signed up to uh speak tonight?
Matthew Jones.
Alright, Matthew Jones, Mr. Jones, please make your way up to the mic. State your name, the name of your organization, that you represent.
I am Matthew Ryan Jones. I'm here to represent Forest Park High School and the fifth annual suicide awareness walk. The suicide awareness walk is an event created by Hannah Kolkmeier to raise awareness about the growing epidemic of suicides in the United States. It has been five years since our first walk, and the event has done great things to raise awareness of mental he- health issues that often exist, unrecognized and undiagnosed. Our movement has grown since the beginnings, and we have seen our numbers increase each year. We hope to raise awareness to advocate for certain changes within schools, such as a higher volume of counselors and professionals trained to handle mental health issues. The walk will be held on May eighteenth from eight-thirty to eleven-thirty, and we will walk from Forest Park High School to Hilton Senior High School and back again. On behalf of Forest Park, I would like to invite all of you to walk with students all across the county, as well as Congressman Jerry Connolly of District eleven, and State Senator Jeremy McPike, who will also be attending. Your attendance would be appreciated. Thank you all for listening.
Thank you, Matthew. Is anybody else signed up this week tonight?
Tracy Lennox.
Uh Ms. Lennox, please come up. Uh state your name, name your organization.
Alright, Tracy Lennox, uh I'm no organization. I'm a candidate for the Prince William County Commonwealth Attorney's Office, which is a race that's upcoming. Um and I just wanted to address the council briefly about that race and about my candidacy for that. Because I was a substitute judge for eleven years, I think that there uh, that a lot of people don't know a ton about me because I haven't been involved in politics. So I think it's useful for me to just um explain to you a little bit about my background so that you understand um why I think that I'm the best candidate for this race. So I've been a criminal defense attorney for twenty-five years here in Prince William County. My office is in Woodbridge. I also have another office in Manassas. I live in the city of Manassas. I'm married to a um retired Prince William County police officer. I retired about a decade ago. So deep roots here in Prince William County. Um in that twenty-five years that I've been practicing law here, in addition to being a criminal defense attorney, I've also represented children in OSMAP hearings um across the county. Um those include uh both um expulsion as well as suspension hearings for children that have committed both serious offenses and not such serious offenses, but that are facing expulsion from their school. I've also represented people many, many times, both in a petitioner and a respondent fashion, for uh protective order hearings, which are quasi-criminal. They're not really criminal, but they have a criminal sort of aspect to them because of the nature of the rights that are affected. So during that twenty-five years, the sorts of things that I have argued for and fought about are exactly the sorts of issues that are very frequently in the public view right now as we talk about criminal justice reform, and we talk about what sorts of Commonwealth attorneys, uh what sort of policies we want to see our Commonwealth attorney carrying forward into the future. So on my side of it, I've represented people charged with crimes that are um everything from speeding tickets and larcenies and drug charges and rape, robbery, murder, including capital murder. So I've covered a wide array of those. Um I've tried those cases actually from beginning to end, including the capital murder case. So my experience is broad and deep. In addition to that, I have fought on the sorts of issues like cash bail reform, um on diversion and rehabilitation issues, um treatment issues, the need for better treatment within the county. Those are issues that I've actually fought about every single day of my career for the last twenty-five years. So that's what I bring on the progressive side, the side of sort of reform of the criminal justice system, but I want to talk a little bit about the other side of it as well. Um this is a countywide position. Um in the course of the last twenty-five years, the county's population has doubled. Um the arrest rate in the county during that same period of time has gone from forty in one thousand uh residents to fourteen in one thousand residents. It's pretty remarkable, really, when you think about it. We've had this dramatic growth that all of you know is still taking off, and yet we've seen a reduction in the number of arrests. That's because this has by and large been a relatively safe place to live, to raise a family, and to start a business. Having said that, what I think um a lot of people have on their minds when you make those kind of statements is that those benefits of the opportunity that comes with that kind of growth has not been shared equally by the residents of the county. Um and by that I mean that disproportionately, we know of those fourteen in a thousand arrests, for example, the people of color are disproportionately represented in those arrests. That for drug crimes, the numbers are much higher than that, actually. For uh individuals charged with possession of marijuana, the numbers are more like seven to one um between African-Americans being charged with drug crimes and Caucasians being charged with drug crimes. So while the county as a whole has become more prosperous and has held the line on being a relatively safe place to live, in fact, one of the best places in the country to live, it's also, we have not shared the benefits equally amongst all members of our communities. One of the things that the Commonwealth Attorney's Office can do is to set policy to try to change that. Um the sorts of things that I would begin immediately is collection of data so that we know exactly how we are choosing to prosecute. That includes transfer of juveniles from the juvenile court to the circuit court. Um and i- it would also include examining things like um, you know, memorands, a memorandum of, of understanding that we have with police departments and schools. Those are critical issues that the Commonwealth Attorney can affect right away. Also diversion programs like they have in Fairfax right now, a shoplifting awareness class that lets you divert out of the system, take a class, remain of good behavior, and have the charge dismissed. We don't have anything like that in Prince William County. That comes from the top down in a Commonwealth Attorney's Office. Um so those sorts of things are possible with someone that has a policy objective to try to find ways to reduce the jail population while also reducing recidivism. I already do that. I sit on the Prince William County ADC's jail board, the opioid task force. Um I'm a member of that task force trying to address, address the opioid problem. I'm also a member of the pre-trial task force that looks to reduce the jail population through advocating for no cash bonds, for simple PR bonds or pre-trial bonds. This is something I actually live. I actually do this every day. It's not something I've come to lately. This is what I do for a living, is this sort of advocacy for these sorts of equal justice and rehabilitative justice sorts of issues. So that is unique to me. This is what I've been doing for twenty-five years. I've never prosecuted before. Um I have always advocated on behalf of the defendant in these cases, as well as the OSMAP hearings and protective orders. But here's the, the last thing I would leave you with is, I have actually gotten the endorsement of Paul Ebert in this case. The reason I've gotten the endorsement of Paul Ebert, when you read the endorsement, it's not because he thinks I'm gonna continue his policies, because trust me, he knows I'm not gonna do that. He's been up against me every day for twenty-five years. What he says in the letter is, experience, integrity, um the innate ability to um, to, to understand both sides of an issue. Deep experience. So what he's talking about is my experience in this job, uh the integrity that I would bring to the job, not the policies, because he knows those are changing. What he cares about is the integrity of this office because it is the chief law enforcement officer for the county. So I would ask you to consider uh my candidacy. If you have questions, I am happy to answer questions. Uh and the website for my candidacy is vote lennox dot com. It's Lennox like the China with one N instead of two.
Thank you, Tracy.
Alright, thank you.
Alright, is there anyone else signed up to speak tonight?
There are no others signed up.
Alright, was there anyone else here um wishing to speak to the council tonight that was in audience? Alright, thank, oh, come on up to state your name and the name of your, your organization or school. And uh for the record too, you have.
Hi, I'm Kaylee Martinez Ochoa, and I'm also from Forest Park High School for the suicide awareness walk. And I'm here to just tell you some statistics about suicide and how it's still prevalent. It's not like something that's going away anytime soon. So in Virginia, one person dies every eight hours on average by suicide. Three people every day have found no reason to live, no hope for the rest of their life, and a sense of loneliness that has consumed their whole reason of being. Every day, three families go through excruciating pain and turmoil, and about every two days, we lose a high school-aged student in Virginia. Eighty percent of these people who have lost their lives displayed explicit warning signs before their ultimate decision, and these could be prevented if someone had recognized this and stepped in to help. And we're also above the national average for deaths by suicide uh in Virginia. And for every homicide, there are two point three suicides in Virginia. And I know we don't live in Fairfax County, but the, a lot of high schools in their area have reached national news due to the prevalence of suicide. One school had about six suicides in like three years. So it's really important. In, in Prince William County, we do lose people. I've heard of people who have lost their lives, and it's difficult for everyone, even if you didn't know them, just knowing that someone didn't have the resources to help them. So this is why we're just like asking for your support on May eighteenth at Forest Park High School. People need to know that they're not alone, and by bringing the lights effect, the, by bringing light onto the effect of untreated mental health and offering genuine help that can be easily accessed, the county can do their part to make sure that students aren't suffering alone. So please come out and show your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright. Please step up to the mic, uh give us your name, your organization, please.
So I'll stand back a little bit. Uh Pastor James Frombanks with the New Life Family Christian Center. Uh we are a new church that has just actually moved into the area. We've been here maybe right at five months. Um so coming into the area uh as a new pastor, I know there are many churches in the area. Uh but just probably about a week ago, I whispered a prayer when I was on business travel, and one of the prayers that I whispered was, what should I do to help the town of Dumfries? And got the phone call to ask to come give the invocation. So I, I knew it wasn't a coincidence. And so just to tell you a little bit about me, I'm a volunteer pastor at my church, uh non-salary. Uh we have a small congregation, but we do have a heart for the community. And um what I bring to the community is, we do have a diverse group of people that are in our congregation that have various skills and backgrounds. I have over twenty-five years in emergency management and disaster response, so I've been doing that for quite some time. I've actually deployed to over fifty national disasters from, you name it, uh Okones to uh the continental US. And so one of my desires is to really, uh you know, I want to donate my time in any way that I can to help this town to become more resilient and better prepared for disaster, really get an understanding of the types of hazards that we face here, but any way that I can to support those efforts. Uh I have a great cross background. I have federal, federal government background. I've been doing a lot of it, uh particularly in sheltering and feeding and mass distribution and assembling teams. I've written national plans and things of that nature. So as I mentioned, there are uh some, some, some ideas that I would like to definitely at some point, hope to share with you all, and uh in any way we could, you know, assemble ourselves to be a support to this community in that manner.
Thank you. Alright. Yes, ma'am. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Beatrice Boyd, seventeen five four oh Duke Street in Dumfries, Virginia. Am I allowed to ask questions?
No, we're, we're not. You can, you can ask questions, we won't respond. This is your time.
Oh, good, okay. I'm just um questioning things like sidewalks on Duke Street. I noticed that when I'm busy walking around or being, going around the neighborhood, that I have, I have never had a street. We've never had sidewalks in the last forty-four years that I've lived there. And I'd like to see sidewalks put in, and I'd also like to see underground wiring for the power lines. And there was things like the grass when it's the, the mainland, you know, where, where you all are supposed to take care of it. I'd like to see that mowed more often because I was mowing, and believe it or not, snakes, you know, you're right along, and I keep like every three days. So before anybody comes out and checks to write anybody up, make sure your Ps and Qs are in line before you write up a report on any other neighbor because that's your job first and foremost, and I'd like to see that incorporated on a regular basis. And let's see, what else is there? Trying to think. Uh things like, oh, there's cable down. As I was going up and down through the street on the town, there are cables literally that wrapped around my bike about a year ago. And I should have complained then, and it wrapped and flipped my bike, and I went catapulting. Luckily, I didn't have, but you all are responsible to take care of the downlines, such as cable that's not electrical, so that I, you know, my concern is more about children or somebody riding their bike, you know, in the, in the latter evening, just as it starts to turn dusk. And I just want all of those cut and removed. There's like three lines down on the main drag where the post office is, on the side where the Pizza Hut is. So I'd like that er, taken care of immediately, so there will not be any um concerns with injuries, because then it would be at your fault, Cora, I'm, I'm pretty sure. But anyway, that's most of my concerns, okay? Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Alright. Any other citizens? Alright, great. Next, we're on our council members, uh comments time. Council Lady, um Miles.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, citizens. Thank you for joining us tonight, whether in person or if you're watching um from home or online. Um I don't have much to say, but May is a busy month, so we have a lot going on. Um this Saturday, I'm looking forward to seeing um everyone at Charter Day. Um Charter Day, of course, will be at Merchant Park. It's a great family event. Um again, like as our mayor has uh put out over the past year, we want to make Dumfries a place people drive to and not through. So um this is just one example of why you should come to have Dumfries. It's a great event. Additionally, we do have Mother's Day coming up, so make sure um you treat your mom special, value your mom. And also with that, um that's gonna lead into my third point, uh May is Mental Health Awareness Month. So I hope that we're all taking steps to um reduce the stigma that has been surrounded by mental health. Um if you know someone that's suffering from a mental health crisis, or you yourself is suffer, are suffering from a mental health crisis, there are resources in Prince William County um that we spoke of in the past, and then it's also good to reach out. There's no shame in that, and we need to make sure that we're treating mental health as it is. It's a, it's an illness. And the reason I brought that up is, me personally, I lost my mother five years ago. So I know that for some people, this time of year can be a very hard time. It can be triggering. I'm fine, but if any of your neighbors. But if any of your neighbors, if you know anybody that's suffering in that time, just kind of check on them, make sure that everybody's okay, make sure that we all take care of each other. Thank you.
Councilman Bro. No comment? Council Lady Willis? Push your, push your mic.
Good evening to the citizens of Dumfries. I'd like to mirror the Mother's Day, best wishes to all our moms, whether they are with us or not. And please come out and support Charter Day at Merchant Park this coming Saturday. And I would like to also congratulate our teachers, because it's Teachers Awareness Week, and what would we all be without our teachers? And I'd just like to say, I'd like to thank our citizens for coming out and giving us some information on some of the things that sort of fall through the cracks that we don't, you know, normally see on a daily basis. Appreciate that. That's it, thank you.
Council Lady DeVeau.
Thank you, Mayor. I echo those sentiments. Thank you to the citizens, we don't see everything, so if we don't hear from you, sometimes we may not know. So, I thank you and I appreciate that. As Council Lady Miles stated, May is a very busy month. It's Asian Pacific Islander Month, we just started Ramadan Mental Health Awareness Month. This week is Nurses Week, and it is also National Small Business Week. And it's Teacher Appreciation Week, but today is Teacher Appreciation Day. And I personally would like to thank my students, who made me feel special in the PTO at my school for feeding us lunch, that's always great. I'd also like to thank my third grade teacher, Ms. Triclin. And I just want to share briefly, you know, a teacher is a guardian, a protector, a leader. We are miracle workers. And we are also facilitators amongst many other titles. We often go above and beyond the call of duty to teach the leaders to a time we may not even see. This Teacher Appreciation Day, I'd like to thank the statewide elected officials, activists, the teacher activists, and the also powerful Virginia Education Association for fighting to secure our five percent increase. I'd like to ask all involved in the lives of youth to give them the gift that teachers would like them to receive. Give them your time, which equates to love. And speaking of love, I'd like to wish all the mothers a very happy Mother's Day. I too lost my mother to Alzheimer's. And sometimes it's hard to remember, and it's hard especially when you're grieving. But as mothers, we need to allow other people to love on us as well, even if we cannot love on our own mothers physically. So, have a wonderfully blessed Mother's Day.
Councilman Phil.
Good evening, everyone. Thank everyone who came out this evening, and those that are watching, those who got up during citizen's time and spoke. We're glad to have you to speak, we're glad to have your concerns and list the things that we all need to know about and share with the citizens. Like many other council members have stated, that it's a very busy month, this month, Mother's Day coming up. I'm going to also add, next week is National Police Memorial Week. And there are a lot of memorial ceremonies going on within law enforcement this week, this weekend, and next week. So, please be advised of that too. Happy Mother's Day to all the mothers, and some dads that do mothers' jobs too. So, I'd like to thank you, and stay tuned to what's going on in your community. And have a good evening, thank you.
Vice Mayor. I didn't have any prepared comments, but I just wanted to thank the young people from Forest Park High School that came out tonight. I know they had to left for inviting us to the Suicide Awareness Walk. When they first invited me, and I said no, they didn't take no for an answer. They came up and they wanted to make sure their voice was heard and got the word out, because I told them I wasn't available. But May eighteenth, they're going to be doing their Suicide Awareness. I commend them for their activism and their, you know, just their hunger as young people to want to get involved and to make people aware of issues that's important to them. And I think we should continue to encourage our youth to get involved and to let their voices be heard, because the youth aren't the future, the youth are today. They're the ones that's now, that's called to lead. And it's our responsibility to let go of this baton and to make sure that they have voices to be heard out here in our society. And so, we definitely thank our teachers, and we appreciate all the teachers out there for the job they're doing at molding their minds and educating them to be the future leaders of America. So, a shout out to all the teachers out there. Mother's Day shout out to all of our mothers, because without mothers, there could be no us. We came through mothers, and so we definitely want to say Happy Mother's Day. We'll make sure that our Public Works Department and our staff has your address and your comments on record about this wiring and utilities. We don't have the money or the affordability, that's a dominion in a town, that will have to be a partnership as far as bury utilities. There's only some neighborhoods that have utilities buried, and some. I would love to have all the utilities in town buried and not being seen around here. But that's just, it's a very expensive endeavor to take on. And we are very aware of utilities being an eyesore in our community. And we definitely, sidewalks on our radar, something we will be talking about, something we have been talking about on an ongoing basis. Thank you for letting your voice be heard to make sure that we know what's a priority to you and what's important to you. We are elected voice of the citizens, so if the citizens don't come out and let their voice be heard at these type of meetings or reaching out to us in whatever public avenue, whenever we set up things on our pages and tell people we have meet and greets or we want to hear for you, it's important that the citizens get engaged, right? Because as the Vice Mayor always say, don't just complain, come and contribute, come and be a part. And be willing to not just complain, but bring solutions to your problem, because it's always good to hear what solutions that you want to bring to the table. And so, with that, we're going to move on to the agenda. Alright, so next on the agenda is the Boards and Commissions Report. The first one is the Agriculture Review Board. They meet on the fourteenth of this month, I believe, maybe. Planning Commission, Mr. Webb, you didn't meet, but you do have a report for us.
Good evening, Mayor, Town Council, ladies and gentlemen. This is the Planning Commission Report for the month of April twenty-nineteen. The Dumfries Planning Commission canceled their work session and regular meeting scheduled for eight April twenty-nineteen. The next meeting of the Planning Commission will be on thirteen May twenty-nineteen. The work session will start at six PM, and the regular meeting at seven PM. The work session will continue after the regular meeting if necessary. This concludes the Planning Commission Report.
Wow.
Short, short.
The shortest report I think you've given in the seven years I've been here. Anybody got any comments on Mr. Webb's report? Alright, seeing none. Thank you for taking time out today. Want to go back, we have two special presentations to make right now. And I will start with Councilman Phil. Sorry, because I got daff, sorry, Mr. Daniels back there, I forgot about you, sorry.
Okay. A few weeks ago, we had the Mayor's Ball. And during that time, we were, a lot of citizens, a lot of business owners, and workers in the town were given awards for their great service and the contributions that they give to the town. At that event, Officer Torres was not present at that event due to her work schedule. Officer Torres will receive. Come forward, please. As she's walking up. Officer Torres will receive the two thousand nineteen Police Officer of the Year presented to Officer Anna Torres. And let me add, Officer Torres has been a great asset to our department here in the town of Dumfries. Christmas in Dumfries last year, I don't think it would have been a great success as it was without Officer Torres' hard work in getting donations around the town. She really put in a lot of effort to it, the kids love her all over town, and we appreciate that. So, without further ado. We'll come up front here. Here, presenting this award.
Thank you. Thank you guys very much, Town Council, Mayor. I really appreciate working in the town. I do do a lot of work with the community, and I love all the citizens in town, especially the children, of course, they're a special piece in my heart. Our K nine unit, you know, allies have a lot of work to do too, so I really appreciate the opportunity to work in the town.
I was trying to get the mic on so she could hear, but you guys finished. Next award is our Town of Dumfries Beautification Award. And this was actually brought to our attention, because a lot of people complain about, most of the time, a lot of these automotive shops and these businesses that's in town, because of the amount of cars that they park on Main Street, or they park that's there. But there's one particular automotive shop that just stands out, and that's Daniels Auto Care. And we know it's extremely challenging to be surrounded by the different types of dealerships and stuff that's there. And Daniels, he goes out of his way to keep any junk cars or vehicles that he's working on, to put it behind his shop in a gated community. He keeps the inside of that place looking exactly the outside. And it's hard not to notice it when you're driving by, like, it's like, it should be the standard here, but Daniels is setting the standard, and I think that all, every other business is going to come up to that. And so, because of that great work, we wanted to give him the Town of Dumfries First Ever Beautification Award for keeping your automotive shop looking as good as it do in the midst of all of those shops. So, come on up, Daniel, and receive this award for taking great pride in the Town of Dumfries and for what you've been doing all those years down there. Thank you for your great work.
Great. Well, I don't know what to say, I'm actually speechless. I take care of my place, just because that's the kind of person I am, I just like everything nice. And it's great to be honored for keeping it nice. And it's, I love the town, so if I can make the town prettier, I'm up for it. So, I appreciate it so much, I really do. You're a good man, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Alright, next on the agenda is Staff Reports. Town Attorney.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, my report is in front of you, and I am ready to answer any questions that you may have.
Does anybody have any questions on the Town Attorney's Report? Seeing no lights. Next on the agenda is the Town Manager's Report.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Rogers.
Thank you, Mayor. The Town Manager's Report is before the council. At this time, I will entertain any questions.
Okay, this time, are there any questions on the Town Manager's Report? I'd like to ask a question about the, about the Community Development Report. Just one question on the demolition of the trailer on one-seven-eight-eight-two Main Street. Marion Samuel, OC, the demolition of that trailer. Would that just so happen to be the house next to the McGossens resident?
Mayor, I believe it would.
Alright, what's, you know, how are we looking on that project?
We have been making progress. Do we have an update today, Mr. Kokar?
I didn't check that location today, but I can, you know, like, get that update tomorrow.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Mr. Kokar has been working diligently to assist in getting that issue taken care of.
Well, we appreciate the town making it a priority to continue to beautify our Main Street and to get a lot of those things that are eyesores out of the way. We did notice that all of that tree debris and all of that stuff across the street from that trailer has finally been removed. And so, we applaud the work that you and your staff are doing. Another question, can you tell us what the maintenance schedule is of the grass around town? Because we're hearing from different citizens, not only today, but I've heard from other citizens, they want to know, has the progress of the grass cutting changed?
So, if I may, Mayor, I would like to, we, staff and I will put together something that we can get out to residents to keep them informed now that we are in the growing season of how frequently they can expect to see that maintained.
Alright, any other questions? Oh, the lights have lit up like hotcakes. Councilman Phil, and then we'll come to Council Lady Willis.
Yes, sir, this has to do with the Police Department. Now, what are our numbers now, being that I heard that we lost some people? What are our accurate numbers of officers and everything?
So, since I began, we are down four officers.
Okay, so the total number of officers now? Ten?
Ten, thank you, Chief.
Do we have, I have one more question. Are we currently working on a plan to be more visible in the community, with our foot patrols and everything?
Yes, sir. The Chief has developed a plan, and we will be, some of that information is included in the report about the events that the Police Department has participated in. So, as we continue to work with the plan the Chief has put together, we will continue to enhance the information that we provide to the council.
Thank you, sir.
Council Lady Willis.
Mr. Rogers, one question about Verizon. How's it coming? Because I've gotten lots of complaints from citizens who cannot see this. They don't go on Facebook, they don't, you know, these are the ones that, you know, don't have computers. They, and they're calling me saying, "What's going on?", and they can't see anything, so where are we?
Yes, ma'am, and I regret to report that we share in that frustration. We are working with Verizon to ensure that that is brought back online as soon as possible, but it has been a challenge. And we have made contact, there's been some back and forth about what it needs to be done to ensure that the issue doesn't continue. But we are a little frustrated with the speed of the response from Verizon, so we are diligently continuing to work on resolving that.
Is there anything that the Town Attorney can call, or can you call? I mean, where are we? I mean, it seems like we're stuck.
Well, the, as I best understand the issue, it is an issue with the infrastructure. And so, they have been responding, and teams have been deployed. But the speed of getting the issue actually resolved has not been to my liking. So, I'm calling it an infrastructure issue, because there is, I don't know the technical reasons, but there are some challenges with the infrastructure. So, we are working on it, but as I mentioned, the speed of getting it resolved has been frustrating for staff and I.
Is it the infrastructure that Verizon is putting through the town, or is it the infrastructure in this building?
It's Verizon's infrastructure.
Well, okay. It's just maddening to me, because they continue complaining. I mean, and they have every right to, because they want to see the meetings, because a lot of citizens can't see very well at night to come down to the meetings. And they want to see what's going on, and they can't. I know you'll stay on top of it and let us know what's happening next council meeting, the work session.
Yes, ma'am, and hopefully it is resolved before then, so yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, one of the big things, and reason why we were able to get Comcast to move, one, we were in the middle of the Comcast franchise agreement. But it's a matter of moving that whole fiber optic and bringing that signal over here. And so, and it's not their priority, but it's our priority. And so, we're trying to get it to be a priority, so that they can send all of their resources out there for them. It becomes a budget and a planning issue from them on. It it becomes a budget and a planning issue from them on their standpoint, and that's where it fell into place. But they actually have to come lay down and build out the broadcasting from there to here. All right, was any other questions for the Town Manager? All right, seeing none, next on the agenda was uh, hold on, let's see what it is. Our next meeting is, our next meeting is uh May twenty-first, it's a council special call meeting at six thirty PM. And Dawn, is that a public here?
That's actually the adoption of your public hearings that you held this evening.
Okay, wait a minute, all right, and then we have our regular work session at seven PM on May twenty-first. All right, at this time, uh we'll welcome a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
It's been motion, it's been second, any discussion? All right, seeing none, call for the question. All right, motion carries seven zero.